All the select board meeting and public hearing of Monday, February 10th to order at 6:00 P. M. We'll start with the public hearing. In our packet, we have a new business license application from Oversight Continuous Commissioning, located at 6 Monroe Drive. And all of the owners within 250 feet have been notified. I'm sure anybody here to speak for or against that application? You went up first.
Hello, I'm Jesse Cray, President of the Madison Heights Home Mart Association. My treasurer. Just overall, two big issues that we just gotta bring to their attention, just so make sure, is that in our covenants, the property cannot be converted anyway for commercial use, at least not visibly. And no visible vehicles or equipment can be on the property. So as long as it remains residentially used, that'd be fine. But other than that, like, yeah, a lot of people have businesses outside their homes. So as long as they don't break any of the rules, should be okay.
Okay.
That'll be it?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm George Weaver, number 20 Monroe. And if I could, I would like to submit these documents for you guys to take a look at.
Sure.
They are copies, you can keep them, of the protective covenants and restrictions. I've itemized everything that applies. And also, there's a copy here of warranty deed, which is the same as everyone's, which clearly indicates that my property is tied by agreement to the association and all of its covenants and bylaws. And there's no exceptions listed for this. In other words, my way of, I'll just go on feelings alone. This, to me, seems to be like the camel snout under the tent flap. There's no telling what will take place if you allow something like this. It's almost like they didn't come to the association with this because they know it's forbidden by our covenants. They seem like they've come to you guys to, I don't know what, parachute in and almost, it's almost like a zoning change. It's like a spot zoning change, and it's wrong. Who is gonna keep an eye on this that it won't convert into something else? I was in not that long ago, and I spoke to a young lady who's, I guess, your secretary. And I asked what exactly the license is for, because I couldn't understand the continuous commissioning thing. I don't understand what it is. I'm not a business person. And she told me that it was for HVAC plumbing, something like that. I mean, let's say, for example-
Analysis of HVAC and energy systems data, so it looks like a call service.
Yeah, well, but let's say, for example, that I was not a retiree. Let's say I was still working, and I had a vehicle that I get back and forth to work every day. What would be a good example? How about Stanley Steamer? Everybody's seen them on TV, the big, the yellow vans and the fancy lettering, black dental print. We don't, as you'll see with number 10 there on Section 5, we forbid that. That's how strictive we are with our rules. All done to take care of property values. Not trying to sound mercenary or anything, but that's why you have an HOA. So you keep up standards and appearances, and you can levy dues on people. I mean, we're a lawful entity. We have a charter from the government, from the legislature, just like Naples has a charter to be in town. And I just, you know, if you guys could just look that stuff over, I think you'll see pretty clearly that this is utterly forbidden, and it's like an end run around the rules.
Can I ask, is this just a business address, or is there gonna be an actual business address?
The person hits-
We reached out to the business owner, and he did say it was remote monitoring, like you said. So there wasn't gonna be any traffic coming to the house, no actual physical work as far as HVAC repairs or anything like that at the residence. It was a remote monitoring service. But I would say that with the, in light of the information that's presented, it'd be my recommendation that we table the decision until, and we notify the business owner to appear before the HOA and get a letter from the HOA saying that what he's requesting to do for a business is allowed in accordance with their governing bylaws.
That's my thoughts exactly, but I do have a question related to what you just said, only because I'm curious if I ever thought that I wanted to live in Madison Heights. Are you saying that if I worked for Stanley Steamer and I drove around in the yellow van, I couldn't park it in my driveway?
No, you'd have to, look at number 10 on the page two highlighted. It's very clear that neither, in order to park it over there, you'd have to have it in the garage. That's all. You wouldn't be forbidden to use the vehicle or keep it on the property. You just can't park it where it's visible.
And there's signage, right? Is that-
Right, or anything like that, right.
Doug?
Ready?
Hang on, Kevin. One more, two more.
Doug Maker, I'm the treasurer of the HOA and a colleague, friend of Allison and Steve since they moved in years ago. And I think the confusion around it is in how it's worded in his licensing. Steve is a retired engineer. They've moved to the Netherlands, which was always a dream of theirs. And he's been teaching a couple of online classes on how to certify people to do what he does. He's not a contractor, he doesn't work with, HVAC people send him their plans, and he looks at the plans to see if they are correct as far as airflow, all of that stuff. And he's teaching a couple of online classes, supplement his income, on how to certify people with that. He and I have been emailing back and forth and texting, and he said that he didn't think he even needed, as a state licensed engineer, that he would even need to do this. But he was doing it to go through the town. There's, I think, a $10 fee, he mentioned. And so he says, "I can bypass that and just go through the state as a licensed engineer, or I can give Naples $10." Was his last comment on the email I got from him today. So I'm not even sure he's gonna be here. That was another thing. So he has a class in May and perhaps two in June that he was hoping to teach from the house, and that would be his involvement with it. To that's the extent of it.
And what we have in front of us just would lead us to believe that it's a home office.
He needs an address, I think.
Remote analysis of HVAC and energy systems data is all we have in front of us. And it looks pretty clear to me. He's not parking more vehicles in his driveway to have a class at his house because it says remote.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to add that as, I don't know if that will help clarify. He obviously is unable to be here, and they're six hours ahead of us, so he wasn't gonna Zoom as well.
Yeah, thank you. Martina, you was next.
So-
You gotta introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, Martina Witts, Naples. So, home occupation minor. We have an ordinance for that, and that clearly puts the parameters on what someone could do. You're supposed to have a permit from the CEO to have a home occupation minor. And they're supposed to have that before they come for their business license. If they had that, then that would set very clear parameters on what they can and cannot do, which may allay some of your concerns about vehicles and noise and all of that kind of thing. So I don't know why this hasn't gone before, gone through that avenue, but I think that's what probably should happen.
So I would recommend, Jason, when you have that discussion with him, that he comes and gets that license from the CEO office first, before our next meeting, when we bring this back to our agenda.
We'll readdress that when we get down to the voting portion.
Kevin, you're up.
I just wanna point out that probably one of the only reasons I hoarded the business license was because it's renewed annually, and it gives people the opportunity to file a complaint against somebody that's doing this. So ultimately, it keeps, it does keep an eye on people that are doing this. So if there was a problem a year or before the year renewal, then it could be brought to the attention of the code, and potentially their license could be revoked, and then it could be dealt with accordingly. So that was one of my reasons for supporting the business license at all. It's just that annual, you know, that opportunity for people to regulate their neighbors.
Do we know if this individual or company has those certifications or licenses that they're putting in for that Martina was talking about?
I think that would be the reason that they would go to the CEO to get that license, to show those certifications. Anything else on this issue? Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it just seems to me that the way that it's being presented, it's all innocent, and there's no crowd gathered there. But once this happens, it undermines the entirety, it undermines the entirety of what we are, a lawful association, and we do not want this. This is why we have covenants. What's the next step after this? I'll come to you next week and say, "Hey, I wanna raise newbie goats," because they're nice and they eat dandelions and, you know, so that's all PC and everything, and they've got really beautiful eyes. Well, what, see what I'm saying? What's next? And this is what I think. It's, this is Achilles and his buddies in the wooden horse waiting to get into Troy. There'll be no end to it after this first one. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Anything else on this business license? Seeing none. We have another new business license from Performance Motorsports, located at B20 Kansas Road. And the owners within 250 feet have also been notified. Anybody here to speak for or against that license? Go ahead.
My name's Isaac Allen. Matt and I own Performance Motorsports. We're a used car dealership in Raymond currently. We're looking to move our used car dealership and accessory sales to one location, because we have two right now. So we're looking to move both those to that property.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Questions for Mr. Allen, maybe? Seeing none. We also have a new business license for Masterworks, located at 11 Heron Court. And the owners within 250 feet have also been notified. Is anybody here to speak for that one? Go ahead.
Good evening. Name is Robert Pump, and I'm the petitioner. What I'm looking to do is just supplement, I'm semi-retired, recently retired after 30 years of service with the Coast Guard, and just basically a woodworking service business. I talked to our board, our president, Mr. Penuzzio, the HOA. It's gonna be no traffic, no signage, everything's gonna be service-based. So I'm really gonna do two or three things. One, custom woodworking projects. Two, antique restoration. And then three, provide a service to our senior citizens to do low-cost or no-cost home repairs and assisted living type of work. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Anybody else to speak for that one? Seeing none, we'll move on to the regular meeting. Ask that you all please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in indivisible, with liberty, peace, justice, and
I had a question for the board, but not about any of that.
We have time up, coming up.
Coming up?
I will point out that Kevin Rogers, select board member, is joining us remotely tonight. Our first agenda item is review the meeting minutes of January 13th, 2025, and January 24th, 2025. The meeting of January 24th was canceled. There is no meeting minutes. And before we vote on January 13th, Jason and I noticed right in the beginning, it says Bill Adams opened the meeting at 6:00 P. M. That is incorrect. If we could get that corrected before we approve this, that would be great. That's the only thing that I saw. Did anybody else see anything that needs correction? Kevin, you good?
Yep.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 13th, 2025.
Twenty twenty five?
Yeah, with those fixes.
With that change, yes.
So moved.
He already motioned, you're a second. Motion a second. Call in favor. Aye. Four zero. Public participation. Anybody here from the public that would speak before the select board tonight?
Hello, my name is Samantha Hayes. I sit on the Budget Committee. I am coming as one of the Budget Committee members, not as all the Budget Committee members. A few weeks ago, a few meetings back, I think you guys had discussed how many people were to sit on the Budget Committee, and because of that, the bylaws were posted. And I noticed at the very end of it that there was an adopted back in 2009. And there was language that was talking about social services agencies and a capped amount. So I'd emailed Jason to see what that amount was, and if there was anything for outside agencies, and if there was a cap there. He couldn't find anything. He also couldn't seem to find any documents on whether it was, like, if it was actually adopted, if there was any, you know, amounts adopted for the social services. I'm not sure what social services are defined as. So I was hoping to see, and this may not work for this budget season, it might have to be for next budget season, so I'm just kinda trying to bring it to the forefront more as like food for thought. And I think if we do try to do something, if it does come down to like an outside agency, we may have to shift some parties around. For this year, for the proposed budget, we're at $99,000. So any cap at this point would be, I'm sure, well over that.
The, did it, I think I know this answer, but I'm gonna ask you. Did the cap mention a total or an individual total?
No, so the language, so in the adopted '09 language referenced a cap. It said pooled money, and as a cap. There was no dollar amount in the '09 at all. And it was social services agencies was the defined, was the defined term is what was It says, "It will determine the amount of the pooled we split by the agencies hereby effectively capping the town's spending in this area." It doesn't say who's under there. It didn't say the amount. From my understanding with Jason was that the select board picks the amount?
So that came, the documents you showed me, it appeared that the, what it was, was rules for the Budget Committee for that 2009 season. And the only reference I could really come up with that would make sense would be like the community block grant funding. There's a certain amount they receive every year that can be allotted to various organizations. That amount doesn't change. They just determine how much they wanna give to the communities of that amount, how much they wanna give to those groups that are asking. So as it would apply here, say the board said, "We're gonna set a cap for outside agencies at $50,000." Then that would be guidance to the Budget Committee to then say, "All right, we have 10 agencies asking for money. How do we wanna divvy up that $50,000?" Rather than letting it grow exponentially beyond our spending. Is that what we were getting to? I think that's how it answered the email.
And you said this year's request total 99,000.
Well, so, yeah, so this year's at 99,000. But I will say, you know, we have like the Naples Library that's underneath this category, which should probably shift into a different category or its own category. You know, we have LRTV, which should probably shift it into its own category or a different category. But, you know, we do, we had four different agencies come to us this year looking for money. So just, you know, food for thought, if that's something that did get, you know, adopted back in '09 through the rules. I don't know if it was just from the Naples Committee, Budget Committee, then if it made, never made to the select board, or I don't know if it did get select board but never documented, you know, if it never went anywhere from that point. But just food for thought going forward.
So I would agree with you that I think it's too late in the process to set a number for this year, but it's definitely something we should look at for next year. So if that could go into the message bank for us to do that before the next budget cycle, that would be great.
And I was hoping that maybe, like, you could give us some guidance on, you know, maybe this year we could make a list for you on ones that should maybe move out and give like a recommendation of a cap for next year?
That was my next comment, but you beat me to it. Because I would agree that the library should be its own.
Yeah, 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 because that's definitely the bulk of it. When we want to move out, you're looking at a pretty reasonable amount, a pretty easy cap.
Okay, I'd agree with that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Martina Witts, Naples. I was sorry, sorry to hear and learn that Jason would be, will be leaving us after 15 months. I feel like you just hit your stride, so there's a loss. But to be practical about it, I was wondering what you guys are planning, and I didn't see it on the agenda. Will you be hiring a search committee? And if you are, what do you anticipate the cost will be for that? And what budget line item would it come out of? And this is just a pie in the sky, but do we have, did we have a guarantee with MMA when we hired Jason as to how long he would stay? And if he didn't stay for a certain amount of time, we would get money back or? So, you know, whenever, I think other people would like to know how you're going to handle it. And my other question was, oh, just as of 4 o'clock today, I couldn't find the job posting anywhere in the Ethernet, not on the town website, not on the MMA site. You know, if you look on Indeed, you can't find it, and that's a website aggregator, and that would find it if it were anyplace. But, so just wondering, are you gonna go forward on this?
So we are, at the end of this meeting, we are going to executive session to discuss our hiring process. So hopefully, we'll have some answers to your questions tomorrow. Anybody else? Public participation. Seeing none. You guys need to make any adjustments to the agenda? I don't think it's necessary. I think we'll move along pretty well. New business license application, Oversight Continuous Commissioning, located at 6 Monroe Drive. What are your wishes? I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we table that to the next session to get more information and clarification on the process and the license required.
A motion and a second to table the new business license application for the Oversight Continuous Commissioning. Any comments from the board? Kevin?
No comment.
No comment. Billy?
No, I think, I guess we're waiting on the other two pieces.
And you will have information for us at our next meeting? Okay, great. The motion is to table Letter A, the Oversight Continuous Commissioning, until the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Four zero. New business license application for Performance Motorsports on Kansas Road. Need a motion.
So moved, approval.
Motion for approval.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the board?
I mean, doesn't really change these, right?
Kevin, you good?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It'd be four zero for approval. Good luck, guys. New business license for Masterworks, located at 11 Heron Court. Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments? Kevin?
No comment, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Set spring election date for May 20th, 2025 to coincide with the school budget voting. Nomination papers will be made available on the 11th of February. Jason, you wanna quickly comment on that?
Yeah, so the clerk and our election clerk, they attended training here last week. They talked specifically about elections. In Town Naples, we run a bifurcated town meeting. We hold ours in two sessions. One is when we come together for town meeting, and we vote on the budget. And then we have a secret ballot where we vote on elected officials. The rules for a bifurcated town meeting are that the election has to happen within 14 days of the first town meeting. This year, it coincides by recommending the 20th of May, that election would coincide with the school budget election. So we'd save some funds on having to organize two separate elections. We get a probability of a better turnout, since folks are already turning out to vote on the school budget election. So from here moving forward, what we'll do is we'll make sure that we track that, we keep it within 14 days of the town meeting. We didn't cross any lines in the previous elections, because we had had periods where did exceed 14 days. The reason we didn't cross any lines is because we advertised the secret ballot elections separately, as a separate warrant article. So because it was advertised separately, we're still legally correct in that matter. But I think this year, we had a good opportunity to fall within the guidelines of a bifurcated town meeting by holding on to the 20th of May.
I agree, I agree with what you said for this year, but just food for thought going forward, that 14 days can either be prior town meeting or post.
Correct, both have to have within 14 days.
Okay, got it. I'm all set. Kevin, you got any questions?
No, I don't.
You guys, questions?
No, we're all set.
Need a motion to have election date for officials on May 20th, 2025.
So moved.
Got a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Four zero. We move on to old business. I have nothing on my sheet. You got anything, Jason, that has come up?
No.
Nope. Any members got any old business? See nothing. New business, discuss fees associated with mobile vendors. In our packet was the ordinance, copy of the ordinance and the fee schedule. I think, Billy, you can open this up. Is that correct?
Oh, I just, because people are concerned as the town not being very business friendly. And then we oppose fees of $2,000, $1,000, and $250 for, if anybody wants to have, like, they're asking us in this next line item to waive a fee for a food truck, where the food truck would be $2,000 for their event. I know that when it was written, it was to kinda curb stuff on the causeway and stuff like that. I'm assuming we probably need to reword the ordinance as well to set up, so that we just create a zone where no food trucks could be, and then you could effectively change the fees to make it more worthwhile. Because I know businesses in town wanna have a food truck for like an event, and then they're like, "Well, no one wants to come do it because they don't wanna pay a $1,000 fee, because it's our private property." But the public, if they wanna stop by, then it costs me $1,000 just to have them there, plus the truck. So I just was, a lot of people were saying that the fees are a little bit outrageous based on we don't really inspect anything. The state does.
I agree with you. Oops, sorry, Kevin.
Yeah, yeah, no, thanks, sorry, interrupting. I think if anything, Jason had some good points I read earlier, but the one thing that came to mind for me was that somehow associating food trucks with events somehow, I don't know whether that affects the rate or whether that affects what the event is. If it's a town sanctioned event, you know, the fees waived or whatever. But typically, it seems like it turns out that when we have an event, that's- But typically, it seems like it turns out that when we have an event, that's when food trucks would be very welcome to help serve the crowds. And so, you know, whatever we can do to leverage it in that direction, I think would be helpful. It's just kind of a side note.
So I would recommend that we send the ordinance back to the O R C to revisit that ordinance and rewrite some new language that would better suit for, for, for today's times. And also, after that ordinance is rewritten, we will revisit the fee schedule. I agree. I mean, I, somebody wants to have a, a, a food truck for, for a day on public property, it's two thousand bucks a day.
Things are public access accessible. And then who's made, who's actually seeing, is it publicly accessed or not?
Correct.
I mean, I understand if you guys, if they don't, if, we don't want food trucks parked on the causeway. So if you made a zone that basically said the village district is out of food truck zone, it eliminates the whole issue.
I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily agree with that.
Well, I mean, unless it's linked to a specialty event.
So, so the Select Board can waive that?
Yeah, but I know like other, like Bridgeton's like fifty dollars a year. Casco's like a hundred. So it just it basically looks like we just don't want anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's also, uh, I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but the, the whole idea behind it, if I recall was, you know, you talk, you talk to people that are paying rent uh, to have the restaurants and how much it costs them to just have those.
That's why I just said you're limiting one at a time, but, go ahead Kevin.
But that was, that was, that was the, that was the argument, like, we are paying a lot to be in this town. And meanwhile, some, you know, we're gonna let food truck come in for fifty dollars, but meanwhile, we, you know, that was the argument. I'm not starting an argument here for saying that was part of the discussion um, at that time. What the overhead is just to run a restaurant in this town. And if what's the price tag you can put on somebody that can just pull up and park, you know, at fifty bucks. And suddenly they're taking all the food, they're taking food off the table of the guy that's paying property taxes or rent, whatever it may be. You know, that, that was the other side of the coin, just to get around it.
I didn't say make it fifty dollars, but what I said was not unreasonable.
I'm not starting, I'm not starting an argument, boy, I'm just saying that that was where that high number came from was.
I, I, I think the ordinance needs a clause in it, Kevin, that um, talks about special events. You know, like for instance, um, let's just say during Rocktoberfest, you know, you wanted a more of a variety of food. That would be a one-time special request.
So the ordinance, as it reads right now, does allow for that if it's a town-sponsored event such as Rocktoberfest. You know, supported meaning, we, a go for it, we like what you're doing, sponsored is the town is advertising it and the town is um, uh, putting resources into the event. So there is a clause in there that allows the Select Board to waive that fee for those events. The ordinance also does state that these, it is up to the Select Board to define where they will go. I think we can probably tighten up that language and specify it in that in accordance with the um, existing ordinances of where those food trucks could go. I think that there's, the language is already in there, but it's a it still requires someone or an event leader or an individual to come back to the Select Board and ask. But I think we can probably get rid of that extra step by putting that language in the ordinance, uh, so it's a little bit more clear.
Right.
Maybe that ordinance committee get together with the events committee to look overall, what type of events are coming maybe in a year? Maybe some sort of language that says here's events that.
Yep, certainly, certainly have that happen.
Well, you, you would, it would still be the ordinance review committee looking at the ordinance.
Yes.
But the events committee certainly could attend their meetings in voice of concern. Anybody else? On this issue? So I'd like a motion to send the ordinance to the ordinance review committee for some revisions.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero. Town managers report.
Oh, all right, so a couple things here. Within this, I will provide an update on the Sebago State's Fire Pond and where I'm at with the attorneys on that matter. Uh, but first, comprehensive plan progress. As of January thirty first, the survey closed. Uh, we had five hundred and sixty-two participants in the survey. That is more than double what is required for a statistically significant number. Uh, so Barry Dunn is compiling those uh, numbers now and their next update to the Select Board will be on the twenty-fourth of March during, during a regularly scheduled Select Board meeting. Uh, transfer station, the transfer station council meeting is scheduled to meet this Thursday. That may move due to weather. Uh, we're watching that closely to see if we have to shift that date. This past Sunday, the transfer station was closed. I did receive some emails and phone calls about that. That was weather driven. Uh, they had some challenges with snow removal. Um, talking with the town manager, Tony Ward over there in Casco. Uh, he did acknowledge that the um, communication publicly on the town website uh, and through social media was not what it should have been, and he's taken action to correct that moving forward. Also offered a, our maintenance department, if they find themselves in a position where they're having challenges of manpower and clearing this place out, then just reach out to us and the, both departments can coordinate together. And if we can provide assistance, we will. Main goal is to uh, make sure that uh, we can keep that facility open during its published hours. This fall, next hour, this coming Monday, I should say, uh, February seventeenth, town offices will be closed in the observance of President's Day. And on that note, reminder this Friday is Valentine's Day, so make sure you uh, you remember that if you've got someone that's deserving. Uh, so town admin, uh, boarding committee updates. Uh, so uh, in an effort to improve communication between our various boards and committees in the Select Board, uh, put together a schedule for updates. Uh, each boarding committee will meet with the Select Board about every other month. Sometimes it'll change a little bit depending on the specifics of that board. Uh, but in that schedule, like I said, during a regularly scheduled Select Board meeting, you can expect a board um, or leadership from a board or committee to come and provide you an update and also seek guidance for future efforts on what they're, uh, what it could be doing to better the town. Uh, Sebago State's Fire Pond, uh, at the last time we met, um, I had sent some, I had had received a request from the town's attorney for additional documents to review. Uh, so they could determine a way forward and best advise us on how to uh, remedy the failed fire pond at Sebago State's. Uh, they have been in contact with O'Anney S and C. They were the developer for the subdivision. And they are reviewing the documents. The, the biggest thing that's outstanding is at the end of what was defined as an observation period, a two-year observation period to see if that pond would hold. Uh, there was supposed to, a meeting was supposed to be scheduled between the town and O'Anney to see what our findings were. Because they were supposed to monitor the pond separately as well, uh, look at the findings and determine a way forward. That meeting has not happened, so the attorneys are reaching out to O'Anney's representatives to uh, see if that meeting is still necessary based on the information that we have. Ultimately, we want to get to a point where we solve the bigger issue. The bigger issue is that there's not sufficient firefighting water for that subdivision, and we need to make sure that we remedy that. Uh, so I'll have another update um, before our next, or at our next meeting with regards to any progress they've made with O'Anney's attorneys. Eats Falls well impacts. So we, as many know, we removed Eats Falls Dam last, uh, this past summer. And there was, there were a couple of properties that were identified as possibly being impacted, or at least their wells possibly being impacted by the removal of the dam. Uh, one resident in particular, uh, there, his well did go dry. He had to replace the well at a cost of twelve thousand dollars. Uh, the folks from, uh, Senator Representative, uh, from Trout's Unlimited to uh, insert some electronic monitoring systems to monitor the rise and fall of the well as well as the rise and fall of the river, to see if there was a linkage between the two. They have collected that data. They're putting a report together now. Uh, we expect that formal report uh, to go its way through uh, the leadership there, Trout's Unlimited and to their insurance company. And we're awaiting a determination on that. It still could be several weeks before we get a final determination on the way ahead. And then uh, as Martina stole my thunder a little bit, I did, I did submit my resignation uh, to the Select Board on January sixteenth with my last day being one June twenty twenty-five. Even though my contract does say that I'm only required to provide sixty days notice to the Select Board. Uh, in talking with the Select Board, we felt it appropriate to provide a longer lead time as uh, there are several towns in Maine that are looking for town managers. Uh, we expect that the search will take some time, so we wanted to make sure we had enough time to um, find the right relief and allow for a proper turnover period before I left. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none. Under other business, we have a presentation from Sebago Fiber.
Give it a quick just for a test.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Select Board members, uh, Mr. Town Manager. I'm Andrew Davis. I'm the owner and engineering lead for Sebago Fiber. With me tonight, I've got Brandy Shido, who's our community and marketing director, as well as Clara from G P Cog. Um, who's been our, G P Cog's been our partner in this. We'll explain that in a second. Um, we're gonna explain to you the history of this a little bit, um, quickly. I know most of you, I think, saw our presentation about a year ago when we spoke to you last. Um, where you could update on the larger regional progress and how this fits in and then the proposal for, for Naples. So I'll hand it over to Clara.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
As Andrew said, I'm Claire McColl. I'm the Regional Broadband Program Manager at Greater Portland Council of Governments, G P Cog. Um, we are a regional agency working for twenty-five communities in Cumberland County. Helping communities come together and work on problems that they can't solve alone. So I have been working with G P Cog since the fall of twenty twenty, which is when I actually began working with the town of Naples. I was working on your broadband committee, um, working with some residents who um, had feedback from the town that the internet service was unreliable and did not cover all of your residents. So I worked with Naples and the town of Harrison on their broadband committees in the spring of twenty twenty-one. Um, a group of towns realized that this was work that a bunch of communities in the Sebago Lakes area were working on. And it made more sense to come together and work on it as a group than to try to go it alone. So with that, we helped create the Cumberland Oxford Lakes Area Broadband Initiative. Consisted of, I think it was nine or ten towns at the time. Um, now it's consisting of five towns. Casco, Naples, Sebago, Standish, and Raymond. And it is led by a steering committee of Select Board members and town managers from each of these communities that have met bi-weekly for almost four years to try to identify a solution for all of these communities that provides universal, affordable, and reliable internet access. So this work has been done in partnership with us, G P Cog. We've also brought in a consultant, Mission Broadband. The Main Connectivity Authority provided a grant to these five communities um, to try to identify a solution. So one of the big things that we did as a steering committee is um, issue a request for proposals to internet service providers across the country. Basically asking them to come in, look at the five communities, and come up with a solution that would make sense for residents and all of the communities to have universal and reliable service. So we received responses from five internet service providers. This steering committee met along with Mission Broadband, um, which is the broadband consultant that we worked with, to go through this R F P process, create an evaluation matrix to try to identify what was the best solution and the best business model that was proposed. We met with each of the internet service providers through multiple interviews over several months to determine which model was the best fit. And at the end of the process, the collab steering committee, the group of town managers and Select Board members voted to work with Sebago Fiber. They really liked that it was a private internet service provider, but that they could act as a municipal partner. So in the past, there was this feeling that the communities were sort of at the whim of the internet service provider. Didn't really have any sort of say or control over service level agreements, prices, that type of thing. And so what was really attractive about this model is that um, the communities could act as that municipal partner and have a municipal network that they have a right of use on. And that is the more technical part that I will let Andrew and Brandy go over. But the idea was that the municipality could act as a partner um, in this agreement. So Sebago Fiber was recommended as the internet service provider. This was supported by the towns of Casco, Sebago, Raymond, Naples, Standish. And Hyrum and Baldwin were also included in this. And just this past spring, so March of twenty twenty-three, town of Sebago was awarded a grant um, to build out a fiber-to-the-home network. Raymond is now in the process of um, sort of bringing it, yeah, okay. This is maybe all information I'm getting ahead of myself, um, but I think I will pass it back to Andrew for the rest of that.
Thank you, Clara. She's been very involved since the start of this project. Um, and thank you to the committee, the board members here, because you were one of the towns that did a letter of support. This is the larger regional picture. Um, there are many towns involved. We are in the process right now of building out a three-point-two million dollar grant for Sebago. A tiny portion of Naples, right at the boundary, a little bit of Bridgeton, North Baldwin, and Hyrum. That product will be finished with major construction by June, um, and that provides universal service to that area. To east in Raymond, we're doing a sixteen-point-eight mile municipal fiber project that Raymond approved in their last fiscal year. We're about to break ground on that any day this month. Um, and then the town of Casco next to you is working on this municipal fiber project, the phase one, coming up Route three oh two. The key thing about our municipal fiber model is that we partner with the town and let you choose what meets your town needs. We're focused on the town needs of connecting your town buildings that acts as an anchor tenant through what I'll explain as a municipal I R U, that you end up with an asset that connects your buildings and then it becomes the anchor tenant, and then we build out the residential fiber to the home over, and all these towns are working towards a three-year plan. So you can see the breakdown of mileage per town. Um, Casco is moving forward in peril with you with their project. I'm gonna let Brandy explain our overall uh, community outreach model a little bit about the company, and I'll come back to the details of Naples.
So the way that we work with the towns is a lot different than other internet service providers. One of the things that we do a lot of is community outreach and working with the towns to figure out what residents need, where people would like to have service. So we do a lot of community engagement, like going to different events, in person, talking to people, and making sure we reach a lot of different people within the town. So we try to build community support and make sure everyone is aware of the project and understands what's happening. And then we build our network based on demand. So we look at what the demand is and we go to the places where there is the most demand, uh, based on our surveys within the town. And that supports our capital investment in the project along with your investment. We can all work together to serve as many people in town as needed. So we do a lot of digital outreach, social media, uh, emails, things like that. We do print signage. You guys let us put up some road signs back when we started the survey last year. Place flyers, newspaper articles, and ads to try to reach people that don't use social media. And then in-person things. We came to Rocktoberfest um, in the fall here in Naples. And we've been to a lot of different events in other communities as well. So a lot of people are asking about it and knowing what's going on. One of the other things that we have worked really hard on is what we are calling our affordability program. And G P Cog is our partner in this program. So there used to be a program called the Federal A C P, or Affordable Connectivity Program. That program was no longer funded uh, by the federal government, and that plan has been discontinued. Before, when that plan was available, or when that program was available, internet service providers were required to provide a low-income, thirty-dollar, low-cost plan. Um, and most providers have discontinued that plan. We felt it was really important to continue that for folks who do need access because internet access is very important to things like being able to work at home, look for jobs, access education, and just participate in daily life in the community. So we have piloted our own thirty-dollar affordability program along with G P Cog. So one of the challenges when A C P went away is there was no way to qualify residents who might be able to use this program. So G P Cog is now a qualifying agency, so they have an application that residents can fill out. They make the determination based on a set of criteria and then just let us know about eligibility so that we can provide a low-cost plan to residents who qualify. So the information is on our website if you want some specific details. But um, it basically is set at a hundred and fifty percent or below the federal poverty guidelines or participation in many different benefits types of programs. Any questions about that? So we wanted to talk about a little bit about Sebago Fiber and what makes us different as a company. You know, we hear a lot that people are not necessarily enamored with other internet service providers, and we strive to be different. We're a family-owned, main-based company. We don't have big investors, so we're not beholden to big private equity or large corporations. And we treat every dollar invested as our own, because it is. We try to be agile. We are a smaller company, but we have the employees that we need to service the customers that we have. And we want to make it easy for customers to work with us. So you don't have to call a large call center and wait on hold forever. If you call, you're going to get one of two or three people on the phone, and we're going to know who you are, and we're going to get back to you right away if we can't answer immediately. We also use email that goes to our entire support team, and we just try to make it very easy to do business with us. So you don't have to drive around and be difficult. We also publish our transparent pricing online all the time. You don't have to call anybody to get pricing. You don't have to put in your zip code or your address or any, give us any private information. You just go on our website, and there's the pricing for everybody. It's not introductory rates, it's just there, and there's no hidden fees associated with it. So we just want to be transparent. Talked a little bit about our customer service. We have same-day support via email. We also actively monitor all of our systems, so we obviously, or often can identify an outage or any particular service issues before our customer notices, so we can proactively address anything like that. We have easy online billing portals, and our local service technicians actually live in the communities that we serve. So we're all local and right here. This is just an example of our residential plans. They start at $75 a month, except for that affordability plan, which is $30, and your router is included, so no additional fees. We also offer symmetrical plans, which means our upload and download speeds are the same, which is not the case with a cable provider. So this gives you much better performance.
Can you go over the difference in the plans, just briefly?
Sure.
Because I can't, I can't read it from here.
Not a problem. So our Essentials Plan is 100 megabits per second upload and download speed for $75 a month. The premium is 1 gig up and down. The Lightning is 2G up and down.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. And a router is included with all of those at no additional costs. No rentals and things like that.
If you could, what was the speed rate for the affordable plan?
That is 50/50. So that is, with a fiber service, that is still very usable for streaming, emails, online meetings, accessing educational materials, any of that sorts. Very usable plan.
The federal guideline was 50/20, and we wanted to offer symmetrical service, so we made the same thing 50/50.
Are you saying that the average home is less than 50?
Your current, your current services in the town, if you have a consolidated DSL service, you're getting 25 down, probably two up, maybe 50/10. For your cable services, people are getting, often they're advertised between 300 and 600 down, but the upload speed's limited to 20. That upload speed is the number one thing that impacts your ability to browse the web and do things. People advertise as big, huge numbers for downloads, those are useless. What really matters is what the symmetrical speed is and what the latency is, which is how quickly a response. Fiber is superior in both those ways.
So a lot of people will come to me when I'm answering the phones and say, "Well, I have 300 with cable, why, I don't want just 100." But it's, it's, it's just, it's different, because it is fiber. 80 to 90% of our customers are going to be very happy and have superior performance with our 100/100 plan than you have with a supposedly faster plan with cable.
And do, with fiber, with this network, do you throttle speeds during peak hours?
No.
No, we do not.
So there's a big difference. If you look at the measured latency on the cable network here, we tested this in Sebago, Naples, and Raymond last year. The latency during peak hours on the cable networks was somewhere between 34 to 150 milliseconds. Our network, prior to the time deployed in Sebago right now, is 12 to 17 milliseconds. That's a huge difference, that's under congestion. So the big difference is we actively monitor building network for the entire load cables trying to just get by at the middle.
So that slump in performance that everybody sees at 3 o'clock when all the kids come home from school and turn on the TV or get on their gaming systems doesn't happen with our network. I think the clicker died.
I don't know, it doesn't have a battery in it?
All right. Should we get this going now?
Thank you. So we also have small business plans. These plans are similar speeds, but provide our priority support. Businesses tend to need faster support, a little more support, especially for things like taking payments and just managing their networks, because it's critical to their day-to-day operations. So we have small business plans specifically for that. And we also publish our network guarantees. So let Andrew talk about that.
This goes back to the latency and other things we talked about, but we'll publish our network here.
Mike?
This is, has to do with the latency and the characteristics, but we openly publish on our website the network characteristics, which is something you'll find the big providers don't want to do. They're always buried in the broadband nutrition labels in certain places now, as required, but nobody wants to talk about the latency of their cable network. So once again, transparent and published. Thank you, Brandy. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the projects we've got going on around the region. First off, we mentioned the town of Sebago. This is the grant area. Those red dots are all the areas that had no internet. They were unserved or underserved. The blue dots were cable. So as part of a grant, we received $3.2 million grant from Main Connectivity Authority, and then Sebago Fiber put in close to $1 million with some contributions from the town. The town of Sebago has a municipal fiber network, like we're going to talk to you about, connecting their town buildings as part of this project. You can think of this as sort of the anchor location for us on this side of the lake. And that Sebago facility is actually built and designed to be able to service your town as well, as well as other adjoining towns such as Standish to the south. So here you can see where we are right now. We've been activating customers in phases in Sebago since October. Right now, you can see the areas in purple that we're currently activating. We've actually, at this point, put up strand over the whole town, and we're anticipating the major construction with the main, all the main fiber lines being up by March, and then we'll continue to activate customers through June. On the other side of the lake, we've been working with Raymond through the GP Cog process. Besides Sebago with the grant, Raymond's sort of been pushing the lead with Naples in a close second. Raymond has, has moved forward, and their Board of Suckman and Town People approved a municipal fiber project for 16.8 miles. That includes both this ring around the network. They had a specific requirement, and this is an example of how each town can pick what you want. Raymond has a concern with reliability. They wanted a ring with two paths connecting all their town buildings, and they wanted to connect their public safety radio towers, because they have a problem where the radio tower repeater can't really talk to the fire station. There's no line of sight for that communication. So they've got complex solutions today, simpler ones to connect them with fiber to give them long-term reliability. When we do a municipal fiber build-out, you'll see the areas in green. That's the immediate areas and sort of 250 feet around it that is adjacent to the municipal fiber. The blue areas are the areas that are immediately adjacent that we can build and commercially invest, because the town has participated and become an anchor tenant. And that's the key thing, as we look at these different towns, there's always a place where there's not enough homes to build, or there's a center of the town that's a gap, and by partnering with the town, the municipal fiber project connects your buildings, and that enables us to effectively build the whole area. Raymond's going to reach about 55% in year one, based on this project, and then build it out over two more years. As we put the pieces together here, obviously, we've got Sebago and a little bit of Naples just the south of you. Casco is looking at this as a two-year project in FY '26. Their, the proposal, what they're considering is building up 302 from Raymond. And then in their second year, they're going to go from their town buildings, and they're optimistic that Naples is going to continue, because Naples Municipal Network would connect these two pieces together. So I've been using this term IRU, and IRU is an irrevocable right of use. It's an asset the town's investing in. You basically end up with a contractual right to use 12 fibers on the network, a tube of fiber, for 20 years as an IRU. It's an asset you can use. You can have any company you want to use it. Your IT department can light it up internally. You can hire another company, you can hire Sebago Fiber, but it gives you that connectivity between the buildings, and then you have the right to renew that asset for a dollar for the next 20 years. Fiber typically has a life at this point. Most of this original Corning fiber, something that's going on 50-plus years, but the standard structure, it's just structured 20 years. What this gives you is improved multi-gig connectivity between all the town buildings. You can pay for connection to just this town building and then not be paying for internet connections at all your other locations like you are today. And we'll show you in a second the ROI savings from that, which are significant. It also can lower your IT costs, it'll do backups between the buildings. You can lower firewall VPNs. But it also enables next-generation smart town functions, like your traffic lights can be coordinated over that fiber. You can place security cameras wherever you want throughout the town. You can deploy public Wi-Fi on the causeway. You could implement municipal parking solutions to track where there's open spaces and direct traffic. There's lots of things that you can do. You don't have an operational cost for doing that, because you own that asset. And the nice side benefit is you'll be the anchor customer and bring fiber to the home to the rest of the town. This is an example for public safety radios. It actually turns out that you are on the same tower as Casco for your backup tower. You have a primary tower next to your fire station, and your other tower here is over on Quaker Ridge Road. That location, this is an example of our fiber model, is that Casco, in their second-year plan, they've asked to add an extension specifically down to that tower. So that would already be in place. If you move forward, then that can be worked out, so you can take advantage over that portion that they're building and be very effective. This is an example of that municipal fiber piece coming down that one mile there. Because of that, our company will then build all the residences to the south of that, because the Casco's municipal fiber investment got past that first part. You see, there's very few blue dots. That would not have been cost-effective to build. But because they're doing that, now all the homes to the south get that. And that's the same model you can apply in Naples. So Jason asked us to do an ROI analysis, providing your current internet costs. You currently are spending around $640 a month for this building, another $360 at Naples Fire Department, and another four locations. You're spending around $1,608 a month. Annual cost around $20,000. When you take a look, and that's all with cable modems that go out for your internet service, and there's a power fluctuation, because the cable provider you have does not bother to put battery backup in the nodes that service the community in town. Fiber will stay up when that power goes out. With the solution we give you, we, you would basically own that fire between your buildings. You could have links from 1 gigabit per second to 10 or 100. That's up to you with the equipment you put in place. All that's very cost-effective at this point. So you don't have a network that's 10 to 100 times faster, and you'd only be paying on the operation side connection to this one building. And then you can redistribute it yourself to the other buildings. So if you look at that, your annual cost will only be around $9,600. Annual savings of $10,500. Over a 20-year period, that's going to save the town around $211,000. Over a 40-year period, it'll save around $422,000 in operational expense. And those are all current constant dollars, assuming Spectrum doesn't raise their prices, which we learned at Rocktoberfest, they just raised for everyone again. So we did a demand survey that Brandy mentioned. We're not spending too much time on this, because we'll, we'll continue to redo this. Last major push was with Rocktoberfest in the fall. But what we found is that overall, there's interest throughout your whole town. There's high levels of concerns about the prices going up, but also about reliability and poor customer service, which matches what we're seeing in Raymond and Sebago as well. So the proposal for Naples, working with the town manager, we looked at different options. On this map, and we're sort of zoomed in on the causeway in the center areas, the blue dots with the home symbol are the town's current buildings. And what Jason asked us to do was design a network that connected the town's buildings, covered your existing business district along 302, to the border with Casco, and then it comes up to the transfer station. And that's around 4.6 miles. We do an IRU at a standard rate. The proposals, this would be $220,000. $892 for FY '26, if you want to move forward and connect these buildings. As a result of that, if the town moves forward, Sebago Fiber will invest our own capital. We'll come up from Sebago and build another four and a half miles up Route 11, up here. We'd also serve a number of adjacent communities immediately, so let me show you that. Apologies, this map's a little bit busy. This is data from Main Connectivity Authority that shows all the dots are our customers. Most of this area is served by cable. There's a few red dots, but not many. As a result of the municipal fiber being built, immediately, there are 75 passings on the west side of 302. A passing is a home or business that we go by. There's another 261 on the east side, that area drawn in yellow, that are there. And then coming along Route 11 going south, there'd be another 235 places we would pass. And then we would, based on the analysis, the data we've already done, we would build out the whole Tricky Pond-Sebago Cove community area. So in all, overall, right now, our plan, if you guys move forward, we've reached 35% of town the first year. The areas I circled in blue are immediately adjacent areas that, based on signups, we would build out as the signups occur. I can show you an example of that on the next slide. So this is Lake House Road just south of here. Naples Center is in the upper right. This is just a typical one and a, just over a mile path coming down. This is an example of what most carriers would skip. There's 33 passings along this. We do analysis for each neighborhood and street by street. So I ran this one today. Jason asked for some examples. In this case, we'd between five to eight customer signups, I have a 33 there, and we would build the whole neighborhood. Okay? And it's sort of that community, community or street by street level decision. So as we run our demand survey, as people sign up, we will then proceed to build. And then we find out is, after we start building, then another, just as equal number of people then sign up again afterwards. So we take some risk in that, but, you know, we can do all the make-ready and the fiber engineering in-house. We don't have to wait a long time. We can do this and build an area out in six to 12 weeks. So we can be very incremental and adjust. So whether Naples is a start to the one-year plan, maybe you've done three years, if there's enough interest, we will just keep accelerating the build based on that. The areas to the north, similarly, these are all pockets, I just drew source circles. We would edge out in these areas as the interest in signups demands occur. The key thing you see is that all these areas are basically immediately adjacent to one of the core areas that we could get to and reach. So with that, I'm glad to take questions on anything, and love to hear some feedback from you.
Explain that map that I'm looking at right there, just so people at home that are watching this know what area you're talking about that could be included in the initial build-out.
Sure. So I'm going to go back two slides to the more zoomed-in area. The core area along 302, it's the number 75, go over to 261. Those are the homes and businesses surrounding the 302 corridor and the Route 11 corridor going north that would be included in the municipal fiber, the four and a half miles. The area to the south is the areas that we are passing as a business we know that we're going to build and serve as well. The areas that are circled in blue are adjacent neighborhoods that, based on signups, we would build.
So you have a piece of Route 302 just above the number 75?
Yes.
That is circled?
Yep.
And you have a piece of Route 35 that is circled? And you also have a piece of, I believe that's Route 114, that's circled? Or may, that might be Lake House Road that you was talking about?
Yes, that was like, as example.
So those would all be included in the initial?
Those are all areas that, the areas in yellow that are shaded in are included in the initial. We called up the number of homes. Those circled blue areas are adjacent that, based on signups. So the Lake House Road example, between five to eight people signing up there, we would build the whole neighborhood.
Gotcha. Gotcha, okay.
And we would, part of this is, if the town wants to move forward, we will actively re-engage on the community engagement and start doing those demand surveys and get that out as people start returning this spring, to get that information flowing. And we can give you updates on that data as it comes in.
So back to the cost.
Yes, sir.
So to do the Route 302 corridor that you were talking about?
Yep.
We're looking at a budget right now of $220,000, $221, roughly.
Yes, sir.
And that's what we would need approval from our taxpayers to make this happen. And I think your schedule said FY '26.
I'll leave that to the town manager. So that was my suggestion. We could do this with funds that are already available in TIF. It does span both of our TIF districts. Going a little further up, Route 11 is a little outside of our TIF district, so we'd probably use, I'd recommend using some, some funds out of the general fund. I would not seek to increase the tax burden with this investment. I think this is a huge investment in infrastructure. It creates a tremendous backbone to attract businesses. If businesses can't get online, depending on what it is they're doing, If businesses can't get online, depending on what it is they're doing, they may not come to the town. And more importantly, for our residents. Residents need to have reliable service. So the, the funds are there without raising the tax burden on the residents. So I thought moving sooner would be better. FY27 is still, I mean, that's doable, but they have locked in these prices through FY26. Right now, what is it, $42,000 a mile?
We, the model, we're using the same number we used for Raymond. We're trying to be equitable all the towns, even though costs are going up. The model number we use for municipal fiber is on $48,020 for that cost.
So with our approval of the funds?
Yep.
When would you build the construction?
We would, I believe your current fiscal year would start July 1. We, if we are on track and have the approvals, to give you an idea on the town of Sebago, we started the day the contract was signed and broke ground.
Okay.
In Raymond, we've been ready to break ground since December. We're still waiting for them to finish some paperwork. So we move very quickly.
Our municipal IT rep, Kevin Woodbury, he has been in every one of these meetings. He is doing Raymond's buildout. So the obstruction we have, the outsourced technical support that we have is ready to move whenever we are.
I, I think it's important that you, that we point out that there is a cost savings to the town, but it's also a, what I saw for pricing, it's a large cost savings to the homeowner.
Absolutely.
And I'm just basing it on, I'm not going to say the provider's name, but I, I know what I pay.
Well, I will, I will say the provider's name, Spectrum. That's who, there was another select board member, Colin Brackett had mentioned, well, have we reached out to Spectrum? Because the town of Casco was able to get Spectrum internet provided through their town at no cost, but they, they were able to receive a grant due to their, they had many more residents that were underserved or not served, correct?
Yeah.
Harrison, sorry.
Yeah, Harrison, so Harrison received a grant from the Main Connectivity Authority, just like Sebago did, to expand and cover a uncertain area. Town of Naples, you have two very tiny pockets, but they did not meet the threshold for Main Connectivity Authority to do a grant in this area. So Harrison, that's one of the reasons Harrison left the collab group is they went that way with Spectrum. And did Spectrum the same thing we did in Sebago.
Well, you know, and to your point, Jason, it's great that Casco revisited with Spectrum and was able to get their service. Harrison was able to get their service for free, but I'm not just thinking about the municipality right now. I'm thinking about every individual homeowner that is paying a very large amount for internet service. And, and not the greatest service. So I welcome this. I, I think it's great.
Teddy?
You figure out how to fund it and we'll get approval from taxpayers, but I'm a yes foe.
Kevin?
Teddy?
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say, yeah, I mean, sure, we've got the TIF money there, but we're talking about how much the savings per year, per, per property owner, per property taxpayer. I mean, how, what would the increase be if we put $220,000 on, on the budget as opposed to taking it out of, we're going to be saving, if we're going to be saving, I know I would save 100 something, 100 whatever dollars per year if I had that. What's my tax bill going to go up if we put that $220,000 into the budget opposed to taking it out of the TIF that could be used for other projects?
Yeah, so I don't have that number right in front of me. In this year's budget season, the Budget Committee did ask me to provide a list of unfunded projects that is in there for their consideration recommendation to the Select Board and to the town. And how we fund it is, that can absolutely be funded through taxes, but I, I did want to make, you know, everyone here aware that the funds are available through, through TIF and through the, through the general fund.
What, what's the buildout schedule for the other 38 miles of town? If we built out the trunk? How many, are we looking at four years, 10 years?
So in all the towns, like you've Raymond's example, we're looking at sort of a three year buildout cycle. So in all the towns we're engaged in, we're doing a phase one, year one. So Raymond, Casco, Naples, how it's sort of phase one, year one, and then a year two and year three to build upon it. It's based on signup and demand. If enough people sign up, we would accelerate this, but worst case, we're looking at three years when we do the whole town.
Take the rest of the town.
And the big reason for that is if you look at us compared to a company like Spectrum, Spectrum has, takes their dollar and says, well, can I put it here or I can put it in Texas? Right? As a small local company, our choice is to invest in the communities we're in. We're not going to put our dollars into some other community far away that has higher density. We're going to invest in the areas we want to be in, so.
My only question is, is because I know there's a lot of sections of town that are camp lines and other roads that don't have any service from any site type, like their investment in this, what's their lead time on getting, you know what I mean?
So one of the things that I think is important to note is we don't build the whole town with fiber and then go back and activate customers. So you'll see in other towns where somebody takes three years to build everything before anybody gets service, and that's not how we do things.
Correct.
So we started this build in Sebago. We broke ground, what?
May.
May. And we've been activating customers since January. So we try to move very quickly and we build an area with fiber and then we activate those customers. We do this in phases. So people would begin getting service very quickly and then we'll branch out as quickly as people want.
That's a question, because I know, just put it, we'll take 35 for example. 35 is a long run of Naples all the way to Harrison. So what if only the first 10 houses up to Teddy's house want, want it? And if the people way down in Harrison want it, at the Harrison line want it, how long are those people going to be invested in this to get there? So I'm just, that's the question they're going to want to know.
So it becomes a question of the, the groupings on, I'm turning to the right side. This, this drawing here.
Yeah.
So the pointer doesn't work, but you're talking about the area up at the very top most there.
Yeah, in the middle, the middle area.
So each of those areas, we do the analysis for each one, and the group at the very top, they get it sooner when the people ahead of them obviously show interest. And if you look at the density that's there, the density that's in those clusters, you have the most density towards the center of your town. So those get built out first, it then makes it more cost effective. Those buildings then subsidize the cost to build the later portions.
Because I can tell you right now, it looks like all of Middle Road has nothing.
There, there is a section that goes, you go towards Harrison, the dots probably look brown.
Yeah.
There's a small pocket there that does not have cable currently. What we find is those unserved areas, almost like 60 to 80% of people sign up.
Correct.
So therefore, we want to get there very quickly. So we end up, that ends up encouraging us to build the area in front of it. So to give you an idea, on Fry Island, I started, we built 1.8 miles over the winter. We planned only build 80% of the island. The demand was so high, we built the whole thing in under 18 months. So once we get moving in an area, people see the results and it just goes from there. And we continue to build as fast as we can.
Where do we go from here?
So where we go from here is?
You need approval to take the, the request, the fund request to the Finance Committee and come back to us with the recommendation?
You will see that when we, the Budget Committee will take a look at the budget recommendations. And then when you get the warrant article, when I draft the warrant, when you guys vote on the budget, that's when you decide whether or not you want to put that on the warrant. So the goal is to get this on the warrant for the election here in May.
Agreed. And by the way, we're very used to attending these meetings. Be glad to go to your Budget Committee or anything else that you'd like us to go to.
I think it would definitely help that they come back to the public hearings for Budget to maybe give a, another quick presentation and answer any questions that may be there that night from the public. That would be great.
All right.
Once we get this on the warrant.
I'll send you the dates.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Crosswalk Community Outreach. They have a request to have a craft fair on the Village Green, June 28th, as part of a fundraiser for their building project. Also requesting a waiver on the food truck fee to support the event. Yeah, please, come on.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to address the Select Board about the community grassroots movement that is referred to as Raise the Roof. And I know Jason's fully aware of it, and I'm assuming some of you or all of you have heard a little bit about what's happening. Okay, so I, I don't want to take up too much time. The Crosswalk Community Outreach, with the support of its Board of Directors, we've gathered financial supporters, local residents, and we are determined to find a permanent home where we can all enjoy a place of community, a place to learn, meet, and grow. I will stress that this effort is not connected to the town of Naples. It's completely independent. So we are not looking to come here to ask for any monies, anything like that. For over 16 years, Crosswalk Community Outreach, it's a Naples 501(c)(3) nonprofit, has served Naples and surrounding communities with many vital services such as offering free meals, a free community meal site, blood pressure screening, Medicare support, flu clinics, an emergency warming space, and emergency meal sites. And that's just to name a few other services. With the closing of the space we're in now and its commercial kitchen, Crosswalk is no longer able to provide a lot of these services. But Crosswalk is able to provide a bi-weekly food service pickup, which is operating out of the Singer Center, but that center space is about a quarter of the size that they normally have had or what they need to, to grow or even offer food to our, our community. Not only has Crosswalk's lost its community space, but other members of the Naples community no longer have space for community activities. We all know it's important when you're part of a community to be able to get together, to be able to have community. In an effort to fill this void, we have started to raise funds and form three committees. We have a grant writing committee that has five members, an events planning committee that has seven members, and a building committee with four members, which includes a civil engineer. We will be having a number of fundraising events starting this summer. Our first event will be to, hopefully, to host a craft fair on June 28th, and our request is twofold. We'd like to be able to hold the event on the Village Green, where we would be setting up, up to 30 tables at a cost for people to come. Second, we'd like to have two, maybe three food trucks that are fully licensed, situated across the street, at the top of Kent's Landing where the kids used to have their garden. And these proceeds would benefit the Raise the Roof project. We feel strongly that when we acquire a new space, it will service the whole of Naples community. Therefore, we are requesting the Select Board to grant us permission and to waive fees in regards to the food trucks. And I believe, if I've read the ordinance regarding mobile vendors, because we are nonprofit and we're asking to conduct something on town-owned properties, we won't have to have, we would not have to have a license according to Section 21B. Licenses are not required for certain activities, and one of them is no mobile vendor's license shall be required for conducting any business on town-owned properties if we're in agree, if we have an agreement with the town. And the other fee would be an application fee, but because we're nonprofit, we, according to this, would be exempt. So the only fee then would be the, and I can't figure out if it's the 1,000 or the 2,000, but to be able to have a food truck, we're asking for that fee to be waived.
Want me to speak first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I, you're doing one for two. I think that we should support Crosswalks any way we can to get them into a new facility to support the wonderful job that they do.
I, I agree, Steve. And what I'm thinking sitting here is if this is a fundraiser for Crosswalks, I would think that if we're going to waive the food truck fee, the food trucks are at least going to make a donation to your committee.
Oh, yes, we would be, and we have discussed that. We would work, oh yeah, we would work with the food trucks. We wouldn't, we couldn't ask them to give us all their profits.
Of course not, no.
But we would definitely be asking them for a pretty large percentage.
Anything else? Anything going?
Can we get an application on that?
Yep, so that'd be the next step, is that you have Sean, a special then application, and then I could bring that to the Select Board to sign off on.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Do they also fill out a facility's use?
Yes, that'd be, yes, that would be in there as well.
That's two separate.
And they'd have to request the waiver of the fee.
Okay.
And the facilities would be?
I'll send both of them.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Kevin, you got anything? Any questions? He's muted.
I do know, and it sounds great.
I could, I could read your lips. All right, so we will take no action on this. We'll wait for the applications to come in front of us.
Right.
Okay. Moving on to the Events Committee update for us. Good evening.
How are you?
Great. We all know you, but introduce yourself.
Chelsea McCamey.
The clicker will work for you, Chelsea. Should it have a battery out or wasn't it plugged in?
I want to click on a different window with the active.
Got it, okay. Or?
You're good.
So yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for having us. So this is an overview, I would call it an excerpt, of events for this year. Certainly more could pop up, and there's other ideas out there, but they're not fully flushed out yet, so they're not included. But just to start, first idea, fire and ice out. It's a beach bonfire. The idea is either the 15th or the 22nd of March. These are loose details, depending on what you say. So a central safe bonfire in an open area. The idea is Kent's Landing. The boat landing could be have food offerings, including Naples' own establishment mobile units with food and beverages from Beacon Bar and Bistro. They do have a food trailer, but they are Naples establishments, so we're hoping that whatever waiver or new ordinance is in place, that won't be an issue. DJ or live music, temperature dependent, sparklers, lanterns, fire pits, on if the ice, on the ice if it's safe. Yard and lawn activities. The attendance goal would be similar to the causeway lighting, which seemed to surprise people. There are quite a few people there, nearly 300. Local establishment support and off-season revenue. Family-friendly community building event, and it ushers, possibly ushers in Kent's Landing as maybe a designated area for an event in the, for events in the future. And always with all of these events until 2026, keeping in mind the comprehensive planning efforts and initiatives. This would be a prelude to a larger scale event that we want to have in the winter next year, that we're now calling the Long Lake Luminescence, which is a, a larger scale event, but we want to test the attendance and response this year. Moving on to Memorial Day weekend, Saturday, May 24th, the Great American Grill Off on the Causeway, end to end and beyond, participating village residents and open local establishments to host one large community streetside grill off. Possibility to include causeway food vendor spaces, not trucks, but the actual vendor booth food spaces for licensed local businesses, for instance, Annette's, or Smokin' Jay's BBQ, if he wants to, having a booth down there. And that could attract a larger attendance, and this is a spring event welcoming weekend camp openers and residents alike. The top award wins a complete grill smoker package sponsored by, to be determined. Family-friendly activities and stations with special offerings from veteran-owned businesses. Then following with Monday, the Memorial Day Service on the Village Green and Kent's Landing. More, the morning Memorial Day Service featuring veteran recognition, student and current generation, poem readings, special vocalists, marching band, and the laying of the wreath. Trying to move quickly. Father's Day weekend. We all know what it once was, but we need to move on, everybody. Celebrate the Naples summer season opening event with the much anticipated and first ever Father's Day Food Truck Festival. Naples residents and seasonal residents, it's their number one most requested event. So we are, for this singular event, and if it became annual this time, it would be on the Causeway, would be the top request. We understand if the ordinances, you know, are changed and we have to have it at Kent's Landing or designated area, that's fine, we'll work with that. But for this event, we would like to stroll the Causeway and indulge your palate with the variety of offerings. the variety of offerings and featured food trucks while ushering in the summer season. Enjoy live music and friendly competition while gathering with family, friends, and the community. Food truck festivals all over America in small and big towns prove to be big draws and one of the most popular events. This special event is sure to be a great surprise to its residents while boosting local economy. And I just also would like to add that there are local establishments that have their own food trucks and trailers, so I think, I think that that also needs to be worked into whatever language, you know, whatever fees are waived or not waived, but maybe they're allowed to be at events regardless, since they're a local establishment. Okay, Fourth of July Parade Details, 2:00 PM, Community Involvement Call Out from, over Memorial Day Weekend, to dress, build, craft your costumes and floats, incentives and prizes will be announced. Great additions this year with a trailer boat show sponsored by a local marina and businesses. Portland Street Auto is going to register multiple antique vehicles to join and state participation, that's already been initiated, for trucks, bands, troops, and festive engagement. An official registration link and parade theme coming later this month. This year, we want to really build into the next year because it's the 250-year anniversary of America, and the 250th celebration is titled America 250 Year Stories, Our Story, History's Unsung Champions. Naples will host their own nominations and recognize locals, and engaging students nationwide to celebrate America's 250th with a contest that invites students grades 3 to 12 to share their perspectives on what makes, what America means to them. And then those would be uploaded to the United States portal, and then we would have a couple students or three students read their, I don't know who would pick it, but read their writings. So now building our, so we're now building our 2025 and especially our 2026 Parade Task Force, which we are needing volunteers for. This will engage local citizens and we need them for the curation of the parade, especially in 2026. So August 8th and 9th, we know is the classic boat show and the water parade, but a new addition to the weekend, this is more of a rec event, but it's a big, a big ask from the town citizens. So new addition to the weekend with the Naples Community 5K. Sunday, August 10th, proceeds raised will go towards a scholarship fund for a graduating senior, and this is named in honor of the late Jennifer Cnealy. Additional race details to come, now accepting sponsors and donations, you can reach out to Brian Crockett or Kate Riggs for more information. Porch Fest, this is an idea, oops, there we go. Okay. Okay, so Porch Fest, if you haven't heard of it, is an annual music event held across the United States and Canada on front porches. It's very simple. Bands, singers, singers, instrumentalists participate in the festival for no other reason than to showcase their talents and engage in the community. Music is diverse and can range from country to pop, classical, reggae, rock, jazz, Latino, folk, and many others. Musicians voluntarily take their, take to their quote-unquote "stage" or porch, on porches at the designated times and perform for the public, for the public. So anything from the porch at Freedom or the outdoor area at the Bistro, or my front porch, or your front porch. So it's really something that we want to, you know, outside the library, just where everybody could just stroll and enjoy music for a day and possibly throw in some food trucks. Anyway. Rocktoberfest, it seemed to work out, so we're going to go for it again, October 11th, 3 to 9. The vendor and music applications are going to be out later this month. And then the amphitheater. So along with all of these, you know, medium-scale or larger-scale events, we want to be able to provide offerings that are events that essentially run themselves. So with the venue space of the amphitheater, we are curating a list and a schedule to have a summer music series. This could look like anything like jazz on a Sunday morning, a jazz trio, or, you know, Thursday afternoon, high school band, really anything, all ages and supporting all local talent, demonstrations, classes, tastings, and experiences. And then other items of importance, the Events Committee is seeking a high school student or college student for graphic design and social media content creation. This is a volunteer position but can be used to build resume portfolio or possible qualifying credit or community service. And as always, we need volunteers, as does the rec department, they're hard to come by. So we're going to add some incentives to this, and we're very flexible with time or or, as little time or as much time as you can give. And then if you have ideas, we are frequently, you know, toss an idea to see if something's a possibility, and we definitely have our plate full, but we want to really hear what ideas the residents have. So with all of these things, you can email theevents@townofnaples.org.
Great.
And with that, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate the energy.
Oh.
I think it's important that you at least sit in on the ordinance review of the food truck ordinance that they're going to be reviewing and just share your ideas.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely some nuances that, in workarounds and loopholes.
Yeah.
So yeah, and again, with the Father's Day idea, I went back in time and I saw like the variations of openings, you know, when, when is Rick's Cafe open versus Flicker's versus every, you know, and there's still a handful that aren't even open yet, so Aimee Bistro's got the award for opening earliest and closing latest at this point, I think. So yeah, I think that there's a way to, you know, work around some things and give people what they want while also, you know.
That's great.
All right, thank you.
You guys got anything? Kevin, you got it?
No, that's great, so excited to hear all those events in line.
Yeah.
Oh, also, Father's Day, the whole point is a way through, you know, to a man's heart is through his belly. So the Food Truck Fest seemed to go with like a next best to the Blues Fest.
I get it. Is there communications between like your committee, let's say Crosswalks, where they're going to have an event on in June?
We actually met.
Somehow that, that communication.
We actually met a couple weeks ago and discussed just that, so we are not having a craft fair on June 28th.
Back to the, I don't know what you call it, Fire and Ice, maybe?
Fire and Ice Out.
You gave two dates. Did you want input on that or?
Sure, definitely, because it's, it was, it's an idea that we want to do, it's something actually that Colin, he really wanted to have a bonfire as well, so I guess, I didn't know if there would be, you know, concerns with a March event or competition with anything, so I just wasn't sure because we don't, we don't throw events in March often, so.
I mean, definitely, the way you're planning on having it is, there's no water, you know, you're talking about doing it on sand bottom, so right now, you've got to go out quite a ways at the lake to find.
Oh, yeah, no, so that, that event would be on land, but also, you know, we realized that the ice might be melting, so we're calling it Fire and Ice Out. So the bonfire would be on like a flat, open area at Kent's Landing was the idea, was the hope. No?
Yeah, it's great. My personal preference is March 22nd, but.
I like that. I like that.
I'm not the all saying, so.
Yeah. Okay.
I won't be, I won't be on the 50th.
Well, we want you there, so it's settled. But, and it also wouldn't be, you know, just some out-of-hand bonfire, you know, so fun, epic, you should come, but, you know, nothing out of hand. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So last item of my head on the Jennifer updates there was the update on the schedule, which I already mentioned in my update, as far as boards and committees coming to brief the Select Board. That was, this is the first one, great job, Chelsea. Your next update will be from Parks and Land Use at the next Select Board meeting. And then we're discussing, folks, that will be the Kent's Landing survey and design concepts that that organization, Wright Pierce, that won the contract, they are delayed slightly because of the snow conditions at Kent's Landing, they're unable to do their, their lidar elevation surveys, so everything's kind of moving a little bit to the right, but we expect to have at least some idea of conceptually what they're thinking of by the 24th.
Well, that covers the last agenda item.
So, yeah, so Pluck will be providing an update to the Select Board on the 24th? I expect to have something, unless that changes.
All right, thank you.
I need a motion to move to executive session.
I have one other thing. That was under other business.
I know, I missed it.
All right, go ahead.
I think it seems like a lot of people are concerned in the last few weeks about the door-to-door people knocking on doors at 10 o'clock at night, and I do believe we probably, like other towns, should maybe create some sort of solicitation ordinance to have in our back pocket in case this stuff like this happens, considering it's been going on everywhere and I found some other towns that have them.
Okay.
Just to try and.
Like me to bring that to the ordinance review committee?
Yeah, just to curb it a little bit, I mean, it seems like a lot of people are upset about people just randomly stopping by their houses.
Now, is this simply related to the fraudulent door-to-door guys or?
Yeah, but there's other people too. There's solar power people just stopping at your house to say, hey, let's buy solar from us, and if you want it, you can reach out to them or let the people vote if they want it or not, but not just random people stopping at your house to sell you swans.
You can forward me the digital copies of those.
Jason, just for the record, this information that I have in front of me from the Madison Heights Committee, I'm going to hand this to you and you see to it that you get copies to the rest of the board members.
Will do.
For the next discussion that we have. Thank you. Now I'll take a motion to move to executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA 4056A for personnel matters.
So move.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin?
I thought he was frozen.
Frozen.
He wasn't moving, so I was like.